My name is Wanda Naionishi. I'm from the Department of Health. I'm a program specialist. I'm here with my colleague, Shanelene Assam back there. She has the water and the granola bar. So please help yourself so we don't have to take it all back to Honolulu. And we're also here with your legislative elected officials, Senator Lynn Decoy, Representative Mahina Poi Poi, her office manager, Charlotte, as well as our facilitator for tonight's meeting, Kui Adolfo. And I also want to do a shout out to our Department of Health colleagues. It's your public health nurses, Courtney and Margaret. So mahalo to everybody. So tonight, what we're here to tell you about is this pilot project that I have to read it because it's long. It's to make non-emergency healthcare more accessible through reliable air transportation for Lanaii and Molokai residents. So I'm gonna say it one more time because it's super long. It's make non-emergency healthcare more accessible through reliable air transportation for Lanaii and Molokai residents. So on your tables or you've been handed a QR code. If you have questions during the meeting, you can click on the QR, um, scan the QR code and ask a question that way. Um, just a little disclaimer. This is the first time that the Department of Health has ever worked on a project like this. We don't do travel. We don't do air transportation. So there's, this is a learning process for everybody. And I'm not sure, has the legislature done something like this before? Is this a first time project like this? Yeah. So we're going to travel through uncharted territory. And there's going to be turbulence along this, along the way. So just bear with us. We're here to learn from you and try to make this, make you get your, um, see your doctors, your dentist off island and bring providers to this island so you don't have to travel. Okay, so let's look at our agenda for tonight. So we're in the welcome portion. After, I'm going to ask Senator and representative to say a few words. And then I'll go more into detail about the pilot project. Then I'm going to hand the presentation over to our facilitator, Kui, who's going to go over data collected by the Molokai Cares Project. And she's going to segue into the Q and A where you guys can ask the questions. And all of us up here will answer to the best of our ability. There are a lot of unknowns, like I said in my disclaimer. So just bear with us, but the intent is good. We all want to make it easier for you to go see your doctors and your dentist. So Senator, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Wanda. Um, hi, aloha, everybody. Thank you for coming. Um, I just want to say that, you know, this meeting is about this community prioritizing the needs of air medical travel. Um, to this past year's legislation, myself and Mahina had put in $2 million for a project to be taken on, on Molokai and Lanaii. It was really to prioritize the needs of your travel. Again, leaving Mokulele outside of the beef, we all know what the issue is, okay? This is not one Mokulele meeting. This is a meeting in regards to helping assist you on how you want to prioritize the needs of the travel. That's first. Um, second is based on that needs of travel, whether or not it's warranted that an RFP, when the RFP goes out based on what you want for this island, like how Lanaii did several weeks ago, it will then be put into that RFP for a private or nonprofit to bid on. Okay, keep in mind that that could also mean a plane that could be chartered via accessibility. So there'll be a lot of, as Wanda said, turbulence along the way. And I'm going to tell you why. Because we got to get real creative. We can't just say, okay, yeah, but Mokulele already has its own issues. Well, this entity or individual will have to be creative enough to look at all the different airline carriers that are available to this island as well as what Lanaii is going to do. Um, I will tell you this, that the Department of Health has spent a lot of time reaching out to this community in the medical field, whether it be Molokai General Hospital, um, the Community Health Center. They'll be here all the way to Thursday. Um, they've reached out prior to, to kind of see, is the story the same? And we all know the story, okay? We know the story about, you know, our challenges just trying to get there where most of us is saying, eh, Mokulele cannot do this. Mokulele wasn't meant to be a medical transport, okay? They're a passenger carrier. So keep in mind as, you know, we have this meeting today that we cannot control what Mokulele does. Okay, so give them the opportunity to explain what they're going to do. Ask the questions. Um, we're not going to entertain the idea of any bitch fit on Mokulele. I'm going to tell you that right now. We know what the problem is. Let us know how you want to prioritize it. So further ado, I just want to say thank you guys all for coming. This is super important and critical for this island. Because if this pilot program works well, I take the consideration will be to try and continue to do this again. So I'm going to, um, Mahina, you come and say a few words as well. So thank you guys all for joining us and, um, mahalo.
Thank you, Senator. Aloha, everyone. Uh, Mahina Poi Poi. Um, I'm so excited to see that, you know, during legislative session, Senator and I fought really hard to get these funds for our community. And to see it finally start to come almost to fruition through the RFP is, um, I think, an incredible opportunity for our community to do something innovative outside of the box. It totally makes sense that our community is going to be the first one to do something like this. And I'm really hopeful that, um, we can, through hearing feedback and through having Department of Health here, we can establish a pilot program that is successful enough that we can continue to justify funding it through legislative, um, action. The Department of Health has been amazing throughout this process. And in going through this process for this program, they've really, um, invested a lot of time and effort into learning about even a broader scope of the healthcare issues that we face in our community through meeting with all the different providers in our communities. And I think through that, that's also uncovering some other healthcare issues that we need to address. Maybe not through this project, but, um, it's been really eye opening, I think, for, I won't speak for the department, but for the department to have this opportunity to, um, really take a deep dive into the healthcare issues in our communities on Molokai and Lanaii. So I'm just really excited to hear from you folks and to, um, be able to gather the feedback and reflect that in what this program eventually becomes. So thank you so much, and I will hand it back.
Mahalo, Senator and representative. So let's, there's more mahalos to go out. We have our industry partners. You can see all of their logos up here. Um, we're with the Department of Health, of course, but we also met with the Department of Human Services. We met with the li, the state library system. We met with the Maui County and their divisions. All of your providers, your administrators, and everyone else that's connected to healthcare in some way, shape, or form. We met with them to learn about your challenges. And Shanelene and I are from Honolulu. We don't know what you guys experienced, but the outpouring of concern and affection for you residents really came through. Because we now know the challenges you face. Like if it, if we have to go to a doctor's appointment, maybe two and a half hours because of traffic on Oahu. We learned it takes an entire day. And that's when things work. When things don't work, when there was delays, cancellations, it could take two or three days just to see. So we've been informed and we're taking it to heart. And like I said, this may not be perfect, but the intent is here. The, the compassion is here, and we're going to try our best to make this work. So here are all the people that we worked with, the health plans as well. And there's just so much concern for you guys to get what you really need, to make healthcare more equitable on Molokai. Um, I also want to welcome the people out there watching, um, through the live stream from Akaku Community Media. Welcome. And, um, there's going to be a, a post survey QR code that you can continue to ask questions and, um, let us know how we did. So let me, so now I'm going to talk about, um, Senator Decoy was talking about the 2 million. This is the line item on the supplemental budget that appropriates funds from the legislature to make this project happen. So the monies are going to be split between the two islands. And it's going to be split proportionately towards the population and the needs of the community. Now, when you split up 2 million between two islands, you know the money is going to go fast because everything costs money. But what we want to learn in the whole process is what works? Any failures that we encounter? The solutions to address those failures? And like, um, Representative Poi Poi was saying, how to make this program more sustainable? Because this is just a temporary fix to this long-term problem that you guys have been living through. But we want to go back, well, they want, can go back and ask for more funding from their colleagues to support your needs. So we have some goals with this project. The Department of Health is not going to run this project. We're going to hire entities to run it for you. So ideally, we want somebody on Lanaii to run it for the Lanaii residents and someone on Molokai to run it for the Molokai residents. And after the monies are finished and the reports are done, we're going to submit it to our Department of Health, all the way up to our director. We're going to share it with the legislature. And the project will include, like I said, the successes, the failures, and the solutions, and then the proposals for sustainability. So we started this project in the summer. So ledge ended in May and then the monies, we learned that the monies are appropriated. Uh, Shanelene and I met with a lot of, um, of the partners that we, you saw the logos for. Um, starting in the summer, we met with Lanaii people, Molokai people. And we learned a lot, as I said. And as Senator Decoy said, we did the site visits on Lanaii. We're here for a week on Molokai to do our site visits here and just to meet with those partners again in person. And this is to establish a relationship with the Department of Health and your healthcare providers. Because we, we need to build that trust. The Department of Health is an ally. You may not see as well, you see Margaret and Courtney and Chelsea at Antilulu. They're out there doing amazing work to keep you guys healthy. But when you're on Oahu and we're, like, our office is this little bubble, it's important for us to come and meet you and get to know your needs. So this is why we're here. Um, we have the town hall meetings. Ours is tonight and Lanaii again was, um, a few months ago. And then we're going to issue this request for proposal. You heard the, um, letters, RFP. That's Request for Proposal. It'll be an online bidding process that we do through, um, ihawai.gov. And our goal, crossing fingers, will get it out at the end of this month. So we can award this project, um, the first quarter of 2025. And it'll run through 2026. And then that's when we'll get, gather all the data and we'll have the reports, um, completed by then. And then we have, like I mentioned before, that 2 mil is going to be divided between the two islands. So this Request for Proposal includes a scope of work. And basically, it's providing plane seats for patients to go off island, see their caregiver, um, their primary caregivers or specialists. And it's also to fly providers on island to reduce the amount of flight time that you guys have to go through. So you can stay home. Um, again, this is for non-emergency medical appointments. So if you have a health plan and it's an emergency situation, your health plan is going to pay. When it's non-emergency, maybe you'll get 100% covered. A lot of times it's just maybe $100 reimbursement. So this, um, the money is appropriated for this project is to pay for those plane seats. The contractor that we hire has to coordinate with your healthcare providers, the, um, healthcare facilities, the health plans, and be the point of contact to get you a plane seat or your provider a plane seat. It's only airport gate to gate. It doesn't cover ground transportation. And if you need a companion traveler, your provider has to authorize it through, um, signing a form saying, my patient needs to have somebody go with them. And then there's the airlines. So Shanelene and I met with Mokulele. We met with Alaska. We met with Hawaiian. We met with a lot of chartered, um, airline companies. And we learned the challenges of what they go through just to get approval to fly to Hawaii. So we're hoping to have an airline competition to bring the prices down and try and draw, um, make those monies, um, extend those monies further. And as well as buying seats on commercial flights. So I'm going to turn this over to Kui. We're at the data portion of this presentation. And she's going to talk about all the data she collected from you folks through the Molokai Cares Project.
Thank you, Wanda. So the, the slides you're going to see are from the Molokai Cares survey that kind of went out, I want to say September of last year, about a year ago. And this was when we were experiencing on Molokai, a lot of like medical transportation issues. So instead of just like going to social media, we're like, hey, let's put it, let's gather all this information. Um, and you could do it every single time you experienced a delay or you had a grievance to like you wanted to express. Let's make it into some data points that we can share, which is perfect because this is, this pilot program is coming up. So we're kind of going to just highlight some key data points. This one, over 80%, if the specialized service provider came to Molokai, they would attend or go and visit. Um, we're always stressed, but, um, almost 70% were stressed or anxious about our current airline situation when it came to their medical travel. So it was always like a stressor point. Um, this is something that we've heard about where people would have to travel the day before or stay the day after, just because they didn't want to, you know, be overly stressed about their situation and didn't want to miss their appointment that they may have been waiting months to get. So that reflects that right there. Next slide. And then because of delays, almost 60% weren't able to see their doctor or make their appointments. And this is just based, um, Tyler, do we have an idea of, about how many responses we got in a six-month time? 270 responses. And that's, I think that's a really... Okay, so since that's six months into the survey, right? 270 responses. That's, I think, unheard of when it comes to surveys. But we had a lot to say, so good job, Molokai, for showing up for that. Um, next slide, please. And because we are traveling for healthcare, they saw that there's an increase. They're noticing an increase in their travel expenses. And I think this came from people going a day earlier or staying a day after, right? So yes, there's the flight, but because of the stressors and just all the extra planning, because Molokai people, we, we're going to figure it out, right? We're going to make sure that we don't, we're going to, you know, plan it out to the best of our ability. And by planning it, we got extra expenses. Next slide, please. Um, I think this is, it basically says what everyone already knows. Significant delays, 89% experienced those when it came to their healthcare visits. The next slide. Um, so 86% rescheduled or canceled an appointment due to difficulties with travel. So this is even, either they're already there and ready to, you know, go to their doctor or they weren't even able to get off island. And this is, you know, there were changes in their flights, cancellations in their flights. These are like the very last minute changes that added to the stress of medical travel. Next slide. Um, 71.8% were affected due to rescheduling or cancellation of a healthcare appointment due to difficulties again. And then next slide, Wanda, please. We're just going to go, this is all boring stuff. Really want to listen to what you guys want to say, but very important. So 37.4% said that it took them two to four weeks to make travel arrangements for healthcare purposes. And I think after November, we can honestly say that that is probably higher. And that's just, you know, without looking at whatever the recent responses were, just from the input that I've seen on social media and stuff, I think we can all agree that this number is probably a little bit higher. Next slide. 81.8% found it very difficult or somewhat difficult to make changes to their appointments. So Mokulele cancels or the airline cancels. And then when they call to make another appointment because they missed it, the specialist wasn't available on their timeline or whatever it was, you know? If it was a surgery or something, it took a much longer time to reschedule. And this is like talking about the pre-planning, um, just Molokai people trying to make sure that they're there. It's a lot of out-of-pocket expenses that were not covered by insurance. 70% had that happen to them. Um, yeah, and then I think this number is pretty reflective that 40% of our residents travel quarterly for healthcare purposes. And that could just be within your family, could be the individuals. But, you know, all of that adds up, right? Quarterly is a lot, especially for healthcare. And then this little stem graph. Um, so the number on the left, if you can kind of see in those highlighted green, which is black, is the date. And these are the responses. So it kind of shows how many delays there were. I can't see, sorry. It's a six. Okay. But yeah, we can share all this information with you folks later because it is kind of tiny. But basically, there were like, on the 29th, there was, in September, I believe, there were eight delays or something like that. And that's just based on the people that decided to take the survey. So we're not, this isn't quantitative. Okay, next slide. Perfect. Okay. So now we can go into the part that everyone's here for. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that we're not here to make complaints or grievances against airlines. Um, if you want to continue to give feedback based on your experiences, you can always do the Molokai Care Survey because that is a continual survey that will always be readily available for you folks. We are here to ask questions to DOH, our representatives, um, our experts that traveled here about the proposal, about the grant, um, and potentially offer solutions. So we are going to move the mic around if you'd like to ask a question. But also, like Wanda said, on the tables, I passed out some little sheets, the QR code. If you're shy and you don't want to ask a question or hold the mic, feel free to put it on there and then we'll, in real time, ask your question or bring up your comment. Um, but other than that, I think we're ready for the town hall, which is you folks, the important, the VIPs, which is all of you. Um, so I know one of the questions that already came through, and I believe Wanda answered it, but I'm going to bring it back up, is how much funds are allocated for Molokai in this project?
So that still needs to be determined. Um, with government process, you can get an appropriation of 2 million, but then they're going to take 20% back. So the amount that we're actually playing with is 1.8 million. We're going to look at your population size. We know, uh, Molokai, Molokai is twice as big as Lanaii. Your needs are totally different, though. So we have to take that into consideration too, but that is still to be determined.
Anybody want to ask a live question? Or can move on to the submitted ones? Okay. Next question is, in the event of air travel being downed, what solution do you propose to serve critical infrastructure needs since Lanaii has two ferries? It wouldn't, the question is, in the event of air travel being downed, what solution do you propose to serve critical infrastructure needs?
So this could be, um, referring more to Mokulele's commercial flights. What, we've interviewed a lot of other airline carriers. So what's on the table that the monies can be used for is to charter planes with smaller airlines. And we need to fill each seat on that plane because if the total cost for a charter plane is like $5,000 and only two people are flying, that's wasting their money, right? So there could be potential to, um, island hop. So the planes are hangared in Honolulu. We could fill the planes with providers on Oahu and Maui, come to Molokai and Lanaii, drop them off and pick up passengers just to fill the seats. That's the ideal. How this rolls out remains to be seen, but, but that's what we're looking at. And then the reverse is going to happen in the afternoon. The planes will pick up the, um, patients from the other islands and bring them home the same day. And we, we're thinking we'll allow enough time so that if your primary care provider says, eh, you need to do some labs, you need to do an X-ray while you're on Oahu, you're not rushing around. Because sometimes the, the labs and the X-rays, they're not at your doctor's office. Like, I got to go across the street if I'm going to go get my labs done and an X-ray from my primary care provider's office. So it's going to allow that much time and then you can get back to Terminal 3 and then come home.
Thank you, Wanda. Okay, oh, that's kind of loud. Thank you. I can talk loud, Justin. Thank you. Um, we have a question over here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Joshi. I've had the privilege of serving this community for the last year and a half. Um, currently, I'm, uh, Family Medicine Boarded. That means I serve patients cradle to grave. Uh, and I do have some training in obstetrics as well. Now, um, you know, it sounds like a lot of this talk is centered around shuttling either providers back and forth or shuttling patients back and forth. But there are, uh, situations where this, you know, you can't be just be shuttling people, um, from point A to point B. A very, very, uh, pre, um, prescient point being, for instance, during deliveries, sometimes you have 60 seconds to get that baby out or mom and baby are dead. Um, we don't have operative capacity on this island, which means people are delivering babies or practicing obstetrics and kind of calling deliver, and providing deliveries without the capability of providing operative backup. So what do you do when the baby gets stuck? You can do a forceps delivery, which nobody's trained on doing since 1980. You can pray. So that, you know, that, that, that's it. Um, that's one of the, you know, eh, what, you know, so it's not just that there's a lack, there's a transportation deficit. There's also simply things that cannot be transported, patients that are too unstable for transport and there's no ability to care for them here. What, uh, solutions are there that would allow for patients to get the care they need on the spot, especially in emergency situations where a life flight is not the solution?
I'm going to defer to you, Senator, because we had situations like this happen.
Okay, so, you know, that's nothing uncommon. So you've been here a year and a half. This has been going on for like 20 years, okay? Um, for most of us, what's that? No, I'm not saying it's okay, but for most of us, that when we were pregnant, we planned. You know, because we're living on an island. I, I totally agree that. I totally agree. I cannot plan if I'm going to stroke right now or you're going to have a heart attack. So, wait, let me finish. Let me finish. Let me finish. So we cannot plan whether or not you're going to have an emergency. We're not here about figuring out how we can do that. We're here about the medical transport on the daily stuff and planning ahead. That's a whole different situation because even at the air medical level, whether it be life flight or Hawaii flight, as you know, we can have those planes available. But if that transporter needs to go to Honolulu and there's no bed, we hold, right? And it's because we have lack of services everywhere. We have lack of doctors. Um, we have our challenges with, whether it be with telehealth and so forth, which is why we're trying to figure out how do we do what we can with the 2 million? Just trying to address, in this case, the basic medical of, whether it be on checkup, whether it be checking, um, you or doing cancer and so forth, or treatment. You know, we're not going to be able to answer all these questions, but this is a platform for us to try and address the most highly issue that we had was to just get you on time to that doctor appointment. Um, that also will be put on this list of how we try to address that as well, which we had this conversation earlier today as the Department of Health went around and we were talking about how now, if even at this point, a critical comes in, we have somebody on blame, uh, we have somebody on brain, uh, brain hemorrhage and then you have that care. In this case, we did outreach and I can tell you on a, um, birth here, we did reach out to Mokulele. They had a plane on the ground. There wasn't available bed and we said, can you bump? Can you please bump? I need to get Dr. Baracera and the, um, patient on. That patient was then taken over by the help of Mokulele. I will tell you, we also have Pacific Charter here that is also listening to some of the stuff and how they can also play a role here as well. So that's an excellent question that we are trying to also address at the level we are. That and other emergencies like strokes and heart attacks as well. So thank you for the question.
Thank you for your question, Senator. Uh, just a reminder that we're here to give input and ask questions based on this grant proposal that is for air, medical air transportation, non-emergent. Yeah, just reminder. And we only have about an hour left, so we're gonna try and move through as many questions as possible.
Make this quick, but I am one of the midwives who actually works at Molokai General Hospital. And I do take a little bit of offense for how you placed your question in that this service has been going on for forty years on Molokai and it has exemplary outcomes. And so we make life flight work when we can. We work with Mokulele when we need to. And people do get the care that they need in a safe manner. And part of how that's done is the prenatal care and assessing their risk up until the point of delivery. The actual time that situations like that arise that you're speaking of is like a less than two percent time. And we are trying to deal with that. Um, my question for the council is that, as someone else brought up, are we looking further into the ferry situation? Because I would say that we do experience the delays in some of our folks getting to ultrasounds and things like that, as we were saying. So I'm just wondering if there are alternative modes of transportation that, um, are also being looked at besides the flight. Thank you.
So, so the alternative mode is basically based on this meeting. Um, the conversation had gone out earlier within the Department of Health. And apologies for Lauren Kim not being here. He has to prepare for budget, which is why, um, Wanda and Shayna Lynn, who has been boots on the ground, um, working this here. The alternatives have been that they met with many other airline carriers. Um, and we're looking on how we insert into the RFP based on exactly what you're saying. In other words, will Trans Air, that as you know, several, about two months ago, Mokulele shut down due to landing gear. That plane was flown in here. That plane has a ramp that could literally do wheelchair accessibility. So the thought process and, and, and get this, this has been a lot of creative thinking going on. As Wanda explained, there's a lot of turbulence in this one because you're really gonna have to have that individual, that entity that knows a little bit about medical, like yourself, um, they need to know about the reimbursement program, the Medicaid and all of this other stuff. At the same time, the creativity in it was if it is to charter a Trans Air and the RFP says, or the entity that runs it says, okay, I have ten seats for medical transport wheelchair, will the rest of that plane, if we coordinated enough, be, can I move the football team? Can I move the baseball team? So that way we can kind of bring the cost down. But again, it's like, there's a lot of moving parts and, you know, it's just the challenges that we face here on Molokai because we don't have that, um, level of other airlines that has that capacity. And that capacity is to land an airline due to FAA regulations that won't allow us to bring a bigger plane. For those of you who know that the Sabo's here, that was the worst plane ever. Um, it's unsafe. Um, we all know better late than never. We've had our fair share of airline crashes. So I, I just gonna say this, that the options that we've looked at, and there's been many options. Um, this community will have to figure it out. If they want an extension of the runway, will there be requirements and regulations to say if the extension goes, will we limit the amount of people on that plane? So all of these things are in our mind. You know, we live here, we, we tell ourselves the same thing while we're sitting at the airport and everybody around us like it is, we're late, we're late, we, we kind of get to our airline. So, you know, we've had the talk with many of you. We, we understand, but all of these and all the remarks you guys making tonight is what we will incorporate. This is not a one-done deal on the RFP coming forward. We will again revisit, take a look at it. But again, it's to push it out as fast as we can, um, to get it out there. So whether or not it's the securing of those seats for medical, um, transport will happen sooner than later. So you have that commitment early out on the, um, appointments booking to the neighbor islands. Hope that answered your question. I'll be like.
Um, I just wanted to add that this is primarily to address a transportation issue. Um, and this isn't meant to solve the problem or the issues for everyone, but it's hopefully intended to help alleviate, um, the level of issue that we're experiencing with the medical travel while we figure out the long-term solution or while we develop this program into being something that could be the long-term solution. Um, we're not sure yet. And I think a lot of that is dependent on the feedback received, um, and how the program develops. But this is not meant to solve the entire issue of our healthcare problems that we're experiencing, but hopefully help relieve it. Thanks.
So it's kind of like it's a pilot program, yeah? We're trying to see if it's successful enough. And if it is, they need to go back in and push for that. In the meantime, hoping that the relationship we've built with other airlines will allow for if there is a plane that can land here that has the ramp enough for wheelchair accessibility and then also, uh, reliability of service.
Thank you. Uncle Walter has a question. Keep it short.
Well, I'm checking that you, you're looking at a charter airline. You have something to get to the plane. Yeah. What I'm thinking, I'm seeing is to, is what happens now if on flight, something emergency happened on the plane? Does these guys are qualified enough to at least assist or help? You know, I'll, I'll crew the flights. Because you know, you never can tell what's gonna happen when you go down medical, yeah? Anything can happen. So if the pilot probably, probably knows a little bit of medical things or something, but they can probably help. The radio in, let the, the airport or the medical guys know what's happening. Then they can, you know, assist with, uh, medical help. There's a lot of that to find out.
So, so Uncle, let me answer that. So there is no commercial airline today that can assist you medically. There is only life flight or Hawaii flight at this point in time or a, um, Air National Guard transport with a medical team. At no time is that airline, and Paul, you can correct me if I wrong, Paul Casey is also a retired Hawaiian airline, um, uh, employee that knows heavily well of any commercial passenger carrier. At no time does that employee touch you. Um, and if they do, the liability is there. So this is why, this is not emergency situations. What we're trying to do is alleviate for you folks the reliability of getting you from point A to point B without having to do it. I gotta go on there earlier. I gotta now stay on hotel. I really want to go and I want to come back. When you say I'm gonna go and I'm gonna come back. So that you can be reassured that you're not gonna be going through all this stuff. All of us have gone through the six-hour delay, sit there, no communication and then to be told, by the way, your flight is canceled. So we're trying to address one portion of the many issues. And it starts with trying to get this, which we felt was the most heavily issue and problem that we had from Molokai. As we sat there trying to come home as for ourselves, that's what we're trying to accomplish here. But of course, all these other remarks in regard to this is also taking into whether or not Rep. and I go back and say, okay, now let's try and attack this other issue. Because we have been having the conversation with commercial airlines. I'll say this, Alaska, since Alaska has put boots on the ground and they wanting the dialogue and they are an affiliate to the other airlines, we have asked, what are your options with your affiliates? Do you have other planes that could land on this runway? And again, I can remind you guys, FAA at the federal level calls us for different rules and regs. Though we run the airport, they set those regulations. And those regulations forces the expansion to two thousand more feet. And in about two weeks, the Department of Transportation will be on island and we'll be, we will be doing a site visit. At that time, what other options do we have on this air, on this, um, runway? That they can also help us because at the state level, the budget is gonna kill us this year. So the seeking of federal funds will be heavily needed. Um, and that's some of the challenges we face with. Again, you bring a bigger airline, you guys know the drill. You know, are we ready for it? At what turning point is medical needs for this island and accessibility and reliability will outweigh the influx of others? And do we set the standards of, by the way, you can only fill your plane this much? And will the airline buy into only like the plane have four?
Thank you. Got a question over here. Oh, sorry. Rep., do you wanna, you have something to say, Rep.?
You can take the next question.
Okay.
So maybe somebody can add to this for me. Um, can EAS, um, subsidy funds be used for this kind of project?
The Essential Air Service Funds is, um, a federal pot of money. So I think we would need our federal partners and representative like Takura and maybe Brian Schatz to help us advocate for that. We are, um, qualified as an EAS airport, but we don't have a subsidy for the Holy Hua Airport. I think part of that is because for, um, Mokulele currently, it is, um, still a profitable route for them. I think something that I would like to, and, um, maybe Senator too, is to talk to our federal partners and whether we can, um, try to trigger that, uh, without having to have that deficit of profitability first. Um, I'm not sure, but I think that's a conversation for the federal level as well.
So we've had the conversation with Essential Air Service in DC. This is the problem we have here. Um, Mokulele by EAS has fourteen scheduled flights. That is all that is needed to block Essential Air Service subsidy. And I shouldn't say block it, but literally there will be no Essential Air Service subsidy because they fall within the criteria. When we sat down and we had the meeting with our congressional delegation, the comment was, if you guys don't like it, you can complain. And I said, we're not allowed to complain according to your rules. Only the airline can complain about themselves. So the recommendation is, is there an exemption that our congressional delegation can say, aside from Molokai not having other options, can you drop the Essential Air Service so that it will allow for a subsidy for other airlines to come in at a competitive level? Keep in mind, all the stuff we've been going through and the change of, of Mokulele's administration, um, probably within the past three weeks, you have seen one full-on change of on time. You know, they're starting to come back on time. Make no excuse, you know, they've, they've come from afar of what happened. But again, you, you need options, yeah? And any airline that has a commitment to the island that they servicing should look in the best interest of that airline so that if it shuts down, like when they shut down all their planes because the landing gear, we literally had to now go do some contracting out, um. But again, too, it's upon you guys, and I can say this, to reach out to your congressional delegation. Brian Schatz, easy hero, no? Jill Takuru has got, gotten a lot of flak from here because you cannot complain to EAS. Why would an airline complain about themselves? Because the fourteen scheduled flights on the cancellation was no longer fourteen scheduled flights, which is why we were in the situation we were. So it's good that the community reaches out to the delegation. We have, we've sat down, we said, we need help. Until you come to Molokai, Jill has just come here. Jill has endured the delays as well. She's got locked out and stuck on Lanai. And she's, I cannot believe this. I say, welcome to our world. We need help, like help us. But it needs to change at the congressional level. We cannot do that here. We've tried, yeah? So hope that answered your question.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Milton Cortez and, uh, I appreciate you working to get these funds. But understandably so, they're a pilot, it's a pilot program, right? So we're looking at sustainability. And my question is to you, is as we look at the data, by the way, the data you've collected is really good. I was a data nerd, so I really like that.
Thank you, Tyler.
And are we planning to look at this, you know, two million dollars and receive a report that's data-based? And as we look at sustainability, are we asking in those surveys of which insurance plans cover and how much do they cover, uh, for travel? Uh, I'm glad Aloha Care is in the building because I know that Aloha Care covers, uh, transportation plus a companion. And I'd like to know what that rate is of, uh, service and quality to our patients that go off island based, based on that. And that would be something that goes towards the sustainable, uh, plan. Once the two million dollars are expended, it's going to the insurance plans and asking them for money.
So, so, so we, um, so of course Mike is here. We were talking about this conversation earlier, um, and that's something that has to be factored in because some people no more insurance, right? So it depends on the need of the community. So if Uncle, that no more insurance, um, is challenged to get off island and say the flight is out on three hundred dollars, you know, you, you really gotta be like, ah, come I about eight, no more days. So while we were thinking aloud earlier, it was like, you know, maybe Aloha Care should run it. Maybe Aloha Care should bid on it because you gotta know about the reimbursement, as you said. That has been taken into consideration. You also gotta realize that, as we had this conversation earlier, is that the administration as it stands coming forward, the Medicaid will also be challenged at the federal level. So, you know, keep in mind, when we were talking earlier, is like, will the state be able to fill that void on the reimbursement? You know, and, and it's trying to balance out, which is why the Essential Air Service subsidy is key on a competitive level for these airlines. But we've had that conversation and again, that's something that is gonna be heavily looked at and for the individual or the entity that tries, I shouldn't say dares to, tries to bid on this RFP, you gotta really know what you're doing. You have to have a relationship with the doctors, the hospital, the clinics. You gotta really know what you're doing. And if you do form that, will you be contracting out certain parts of, you handle reservations? You know what is the, what is the care level? You, the reservation has been booked prior to an doctor appointment. So it, it, it's, it's, this is tough, gonna be tough. I just gonna say that.
Yeah, I just want to add, address your data, the data portion of your question. So data is gonna be playing a big role in the information that we take back to the legislature. Um, we have, uh, Rural, Rural Health Policy and Research Center here that's involved with this project. Um, they have a lot of experience in collecting data and making policy recommendations. So you can go to your policymakers and, and get the results that you want. So, um, we met, I'm gonna, um, tap into you and see what kind of data do you feel is gonna be necessary? Because whatever entity we hire, they have to collect data from the patients and the providers to see how effective this program really is. And then, um, we're working with, um, Rural Health Center to come up with this report that will be convincing to their colleagues to continuously fund, um, a non-emergency medical air transportation.
Super appreciate all of the questions. Um, if there's any feedback on specific criteria that you feel is important to be included in the RFP or considered in the RFP, that would be really helpful to hear too. Um, because I think all of this is being taken back and will be considered to be included. So now is a good time to have that heard by the Department of Health as well. If there's, um, you know, just off the top of my head, if you envision this program would be important to prioritize kupuna travel or, um, certain types of appointments, um, certain types of insurance, I'm not sure, but I think those points would be really helpful to share if that's feedback you feel like you'd like to give.
Yeah, so any input on how the proposal grant can be structured is kind of what we're looking for as well as your questions. is kind of what we're looking for, as well as your questions.
Um, I just first wanted to say mahalo nui to all of the departments um that came out to make this possible. Super, super mahalo Lynn and Mahina for hustling and getting us that um $2 million to start off with. Um, sorry, I think that was me. Um, it's a, it's a great start and it's, it's not enough. And I am looking forward to whoever is gonna take up this RFP. Um, and I guess my question isn't really for you folks. It's, it's for everybody in the room. Is there anyone here that's um really considering taking this RFP? Because somebody in this room has to. Like, we need this service for sure on our island. And I think it's all of our responsibility to support whoever does take this RFP. Um, I know I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of whoever does. I don't know if Sustainable has the capacity. So we'll, we'll be in a, a role to support whoever, whoever does take this RFP. I am, I am looking at you for a reason. So if, if anybody does take the RFP, please um let, let us know. We're happy to um be a support role. Um, because somebody in our community has to, has to, has to take this. And, and if you are willing to take this RFP, say so now so we can figure out what kinda criteria we need the Department of Health to have.
Um, the RFP process is an open, public process for um any entity qualified to bid on, to bid on. Um, that's required by law. Um, but it would also be my hope that it is um a Molokai organization that would consider it, but it doesn't have to be. Um, but that would be my hope that we do have. And the Department of Health has been doing such good outreach and um to our entities. And hopefully that's, you know, encouraged our entities to consider putting in a bid. But it is gonna be a big lift.
I, I think no matter who bids on it, I think the idea here is what you guys like for the priority? Because that is what's gonna be in the RFP, yeah? So try prioritize what you like tonight. What you feel, whether it's kupuna should go first or whichever. Again, the creativity behind the RFP will be, does that individual, that entity has capacity? And the capacity will be, as you guys know, a struggle is on one airline. Their capacity will be able to have to work with many different carriers and to say, can I cut one deal here? If I buy out this many seats? Can I do this here? And then again, figuring out again the reimbursement, yeah? Because the reimbursement will tell us, based on the data, how long we can carry this. And then it will also be based upon the individual need of the patient using the service. Because, so I was explaining earlier, most of us, oh, no offense, for women, we will do more prevention. Men will wait till later. And I always encourage, you know, try to do prevention. So we prepare ourselves and not wait till last minute. By the way, you get this, you know, because we, we isolated. We, we're in a rural area. So while many of these insurance companies have that type of stuff. But tonight is really all about, what do you believe should be the priority? And if it's not mentioned here, um, what we assess throughout the different entities that the Department of Health met with, myself and Mahina will also have to sit down later and kinda say, eh, you know, maybe that's not what we kinda, you know, saw. And we can always come back and say, okay, this kinda what we felt the need is. But it should be you guys. It shouldn't be government driving this thing down because you guys don't live here. I mean, we all live here, but this is about you guys. We've always been accused of government telling you what to do. So we're here to bring the funds necessary. The pilot project is successful. It's then upon us to say, eh, this has worked. Let's refund it and at the same time try build um for an airline that will take on this consideration of our medical needs.
Um, okay, Aloha. I have a question. I mean, I think, you know, this is so wonderful, especially for our island of Molokai. Um, I for one travel, I just went check with HMS yesterday. Okay, I get private plan. But I on number 10, you only allow 10 reimbursement. $100 before was the full price. Past few years, only $100 reimbursement for my food, $200 something dollar trip. Anyway, but I think as an island, we're gonna have to support whoever um bids and receives it um as a, as a whole. And I got a question though, okay? We get 1.8 million and that's only for Molokai. This going help, only for Molokai?
Yeah, Molokai and Lanai.
The 2 million, okay, so now we down to, what, 800,000? Only for Molokai? Because it's 2 million for the two islands, right? Right, okay, so we looking at uh, well, maybe 1.25 million gonna be for Molokai. Now, this person or entity that going take over, that going fund this, out of this budget going be funding them, plus the airfares. Um, and we hoping we gonna get reimbursed from, what, medical? I know HMS ain't gonna reimburse nothing. But the Quest Medicaid, we hoping going get funding back from them because we booking the flight. See, all that because we gotta pay for these guys, run the thing. What if the money run out before you guys can even get any more funding? How does this work? Um, going guarantee, we gonna be able for, go forward. But I think Molokai as a whole, we gonna have to support whoever. And of course, our medically fragile should come first, besides our kupuna, that if they got to, and would be good if the coordinator or whoever they coordinates, hopefully get, maybe several people can fill this nine-seater plane where one day this is, we're gonna set up for go Honolulu doctors. Anybody get doctors or, you know, because I can't see, I mean, I thankful for the doctors that come here already. But you cannot do the ultrasound. You cannot do this if the doctor say you gotta do this right now. We stay in Honolulu, can do everything there. Would be best if we could just travel there. But I think this is one good thing. But hopefully somebody can run um the thing, you know, and get all the help that can get. Thank you.
So Tom, Margaret, thank you for that. And this is why this is pretty rough, okay? It's because the concerted effort, um, again, too, for those that have endured the past three years, right? When we stay up at the hospital and we air vacuuming, what the first thing we do? Pull out the phone. Let me check out this plane, get some flights now. So some of us will use this, some of us will choose not to. I cannot speak for HMS because I get not too nice things to say as well. Um, but we cannot change the dynamics of their rules and regs because they will go according to what we will be um hit with under the federal government shortly. We will feel the full wrath of what's gonna come down. So we're trying to prepare ourselves as best as we can at the state level to push this pilot program as best as we can. Try and prioritize, like you said, the fragile of our kupuna first. Um, and try to work within the realm of that, which is why, and I can say this. I told this to Mike earlier. I said, Mike, under Aloha Care, you get the bulk of the guys. I said, you're good at that. You handle reimbursement. Whether or not they wanna take that on, because then you still get HMS Kaiser, right, and all this? And then whether or not to do those reimbursements? Because when we talked earlier, I said, eh, how you going do the reimbursement? Because maybe I know my medical, right? And Mahina get medical, ensuring should him, it'll go fast. She can do the person, but then now I'm like, okay, gonna cost me $340 because we don't do air transport. All that stuff gotta be considered. I don't know the perfect answer, but I tell you, Wanda, put that down, what, what you just said, yeah? And then we go back and we just vet the thing and say, okay, this was the response on the community on prioritization. So, you know, this is good intake for them. They know it best. They've reached out to the different carriers as well. I don't know. All, all I know is we needed money. And me and Mahina was like, eh, give us some money. And we wanted the community to weigh more in on this than us at this time.
Um, just as a side note for the um first part of what you said related to HMSA reimbursements, I think we've been hearing that as an issue even um starting on Lanai. Um, primarily their medical is private HMSA. And we heard that a lot from their community that um having to pay upfront and then wait for only a partial reimbursement is really challenging for them. So I don't think that that reimbursement is something that can be addressed through this program, but I think it's something that we can definitely try to work on going forward in separate policy. Hopefully, um, we could help to alleviate that as well.
No, so the intake is good, yeah. And add us a thing, like, remind us? So, so like, remind us, because, you know, all these other moving parts is going on for us to address here on Molokai. The medical is, I believe, is the most critical for us. Especially when you're sitting with on kupuna and they go like this. Eh, I'm just gonna dial over here already because I gotta wait at the airport. My bed is just waiting in my bed. You know, when, when you gotta hear that, we better it, it's really bad. So take into consideration, we're gonna try to address this part first. And as we take the rest of the input that you guys are giving, we try to work towards doing some of that, which is why I believe the pilot program has to succeed. If the pilot program fails and the data does not back the pilot program, it's gonna be like super difficult to make that case. So in the past, um, so Mahina had brought her team over from um the house. I brought mine over from the Senate. And the best part was that, I don't know about you guys, but like, they all got delayed, which is kind of funny. Because everybody was losing their mind. And then we went to Kalapapa and then they got delayed there too. And I was like, why you guys mad for? Like, just sit down, enjoy the view. Oh, we gotta get back. I was like, welcome to our world. You know, at that point, you're like, wow, you guys get problems. I was like, yeah, this is our problem. So, you know, they have been supportive of this funding, but they want to embrace the fact that what is your guys' priority. So this is why we continue to, um, you know, wanna reach out and hear you guys because we know already what the problem is. But we gotta hear so we can do the RFP.
Hold, hold on, Robert, hold on. Thank you. There is a line. Thank you for your patience.
Aloha, everybody. Thank you, Senator Decoy and Representative Mahina for fighting for that $2 million. Wanda and Shayna Lynn for being boots in the ground this week. I have never heard of a department sending people here for four days, you know, and really digging deep into our community. So mahalo for doing that. So I wanna re, say it again, why we're here. So we are here to determine how to spend $2 million on medical transportation for non-emergency. And this is kinda think about it where you're leaving your home, you're jumping in your car and going to the doctors. But for us, we gotta jump on the plane and see a specialist off island. So now I wanna emphasize what Puna said. Yes, somebody in this room or on this island needs to be the one that applies for the RFP. But I shared this with Wanda before. It has to be somebody who has the relationships with the medical providers and also the insurance companies. Because it's gonna take time for them to get credentialed, build that relationship with those companies to access all those confidential information and stuff. So we also want this pilot to be successful. And we only have a short amount of time because we only have a little bit of money, considering. I believe it was 200 flights a month for a year for just a billion dollars. Now, that's not just the salary for the travel coordinator and the staff to run the program. So we really gotta think about, so when you guys go home tonight, think about those things, submit it on that QR code so we really can narrow down who can take on this project. And it's not me. It's not me. I can wholly assist. I'm a great resource with data. I can help organize. I can help, you know, find information. I can use my resources for that. But it has to be um someone that well-connected in the health industry to bid this pilot to be successful. Because if it's successful, our elected officials can fight for money. Different levels, right? They can make that connections to our federal level and say, hey, this is working for us. Can you help us with federal money? And then hopefully we can get some private sector funds as well. But yeah, so I just wanted to say that. So I hope you all chime in because it's gonna take all of us. And this is a small piece of the pie. We know get plenty more other issues. But it's something that is at the top right now, okay? Mahalo. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. So, yes, this is a cocko effort. It's not just us up here, the legislature, the executive branch. But like everyone is saying, we're asking you, what, what do you guys want? What do you guys need? So Tyler mentioned a QR code if you guys have questions. We're posting it right up here. This is our post-meeting survey. And then also on your tables and Kui handed you some questions to ask right now through another QR code that um we can hear, get your feedback that way, so.
Okay, got one question over here.
Aloha. I'm colorized by what I say. My dad might not, um, you know, might offend you, but I, please, don't be offended. You know, I'm here to, to speak about our Molokai people. Our Molokai community has been suffering and has been weaponized, you know, by our government. And also, I want all of you to know here that these two ladies are responsible in looking over our welfare of us, of the community, of the people of Molokai. Why? Because we're taxpayers. They work for us. We don't work for them, okay? So, but they do, they do need help. And the only way anything can move, we gonna have to get on them, on top of them. And to me, money shouldn't be the issue here. Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I don't have questions. I have answers, okay? So what I'm here to speak on tonight is, I wear my hat, yeah? So I'm a Democrat, yeah? But I voted for Republican this year because Democrats don't have a policy. So, and so what, what I wanted to let you folks know, yeah? That you are taxpayers. Yeah, so we have all these immigrants, you know? Um, they're not immigrants, but these people coming to the United States and they burning up our money. Well, this got all to do with medical, we don't have money. Anyway, where is our money? So we need to follow the money in order for us to get anything, whether it be medical, whether it be um, anything to do with health, yeah? We need help. And then I understand what you guys are getting. But what I'm saying, all the money, millions, and if not trillions of money spent on all these illegal people coming to the United States, all the money is spent there. So nothing here for us. We're gonna suffer, yeah? So tonight, we talking about how we gonna get transported. What we need, I like to ask our senators, what each one of us need is that white paper. Where we can just go to the airport, we don't have to do customs. We don't have to do security. I'll let you show the white paper, we go right to, if you look, if you need medical help.
Okay, Uncle, Uncle, so um, that kind of stuff, we have no control over, over. We no control immigration. I no control passports. I don't control customs. What we're trying to do is we trying to prioritize what is the need here in the RFP, yeah? That can be one discussion we can have later with the congressional, yeah? No, no, so I get it, Uncle. Um, but the issues you're wanting to talk about is at a federal level. So your taxpayer dollars that we've looked at for everybody else was to address the air medical. So your taxpayer dollars that we've looked at for everybody else was to address the air medical transport. And this is where your tax dollars are going, yeah, Uncle, so um, what I gonna do, Uncle, we gonna have this conversation later?
Thank you, Uncle, for your input.
No, Uncle, thank you.
We're gonna move on to the next question.
Yeah, we're gonna take that into consideration, Uncle. No, thank you, but we'll put, take that into consideration as well.
Aloha, I first like to extend mahalos to our legislators for your koko to make this happen for Molokai. I have a question, I think for Department of Health. When you talk reimbursement, um, I can understand us having from the private sector. And I think you mentioned, my conversation with you, sixty-five to seventy percent is MedQuest for our island. Does in the RFP, will that be included that who processes the reimbursement? Who receives the reimbursement? Um, is it the entity that is awarded um this pilot program? Or is it directly to the patients or does it come back? I mean, I don't understand the full process, but if we have sixty to seventy percent. And the reimbursement is fulfilled, then that's quite a bit of money to, I think, in my. Little brains is that can try and help to add to the sustainability um to move this um. Pilot project to something more permanent. And I agree with what Tyler said, and this is just a comment. But I think the way the RFP is written is most important that all the details are not left out. Because you have to have that kind of capacity. Um, you you have to be a travel agent, you have to be a coordinator with the um providers. And then with the insurance as well as with the patients. And 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 then there's going to be the question on ground trans. Um, other things that does not provide it into this RFP. So um, it it, when you think about it, there's just maybe one entity on this island that probably is fully has at full capacity. And I'm gonna say it's probably Molokai General Hospital. And then maybe they would consider it, but if not, you know, hopefully the um awarded entity will get the kind of support they they will need. From the Department of Health, especially when it comes to all the HIPAA and everything else that is required with healthcare, yeah? So that's just my comment, but thank you very much. Thank you, Wanda and Sheila.
So Auntie Stacy, um, let me just say this, exactly what you brought up. Wanda, those are the details that we've been talking about. So that is something that will be added into the RFP. Because of course confidentiality is gonna be key and most important. And the fact that the recommendation that you've made as well as others, because you gotta be super diverse in this. You gotta know your stuff and you cannot mess around because the decision you make to move that individual. Go be a life in that situation and that's on that entity, those individuals, yeah? So thank you for the comments that you made. Sorry.
Echoing on on your comments, which were fabulous, thanks. Um, I had I had asked Tyler, but I guess I'm wondering, do the outcome measures of what we determine as success? For this pilot program, do we determine those or are there certain ones that the Department of Health? You know, is it about the number of flights that we were able to accomplish or is it about actual moving the needle on health? Morbidity and mortality or health outcomes um for accessibility? I'm just wondering if there's a model for that or or um. You know, other templates that you've looked at that would help us when we're when we're developing the RFP? Thanks.
So ideally, it would be nice to see an improvement in health outcomes, but I'm not sure. And I'd have to talk with people who know how to um collect and measure data and analyze data if that's possible. But that would be the ideal outcome, so they can go back to their colleagues and say, look at what this money did. More people are seeing their providers rather than consigning themselves to an early death, you know? Um, so that's the hope.
Go ahead, I was reminding her to use the mic. Thank you for using the mic.
Um, aloha, um, I guess my question is, the charter, the the plane, the other planes that you going charter, it sounded like you said Pacific charters or whatever. What was the name of the plane? Was it Pacific charters?
They're one of the airline carriers that we um spoke with.
Okay, the uh, the question I guess is what type of plane, how many seats? Um, and I guess how's the how's their the record, I guess, because I never heard of these people. Uh, I never saw the plane, so I mean, we just only have Mokulele, Air Molokai and some planes, so I'm just curious.
So um, they're a nine seater. Um, they actually wanted to bring the planes here. Um, they are going through compliance, pause, stop me if I am not supposed to say certain things, okay? Um, they have actually, um, those planes are in Hawaii. Again, it's a smaller plane, it's an option, they are not the only airlines as you folks know in Hawaii. So anybody that is here in Hawaii that has the opportunity to offer up that company plane. Will be an option within the discussion of the RFP and the outreach for medical transportation. And if you go online, you can actually see that plane, um, it is a very nice plane. Um, there's two of them here in the state of Hawaii, or actually four. Yeah, and and if um, when the canoe race happened, that plane actually flew to Molokai, it was chartered. Um, but it's a very nice plane and again, the challenge is wheelchair accessibility as well, so those planes are here.
And one thing with their planes that they fly, um, the entrance and exit is in the back like Mokulele, but it's wider. And it's closer to the ground, so there's still that issue of getting a wheelchair on or somebody with limited mobility. But it's bigger than the um Mokulele planes that are flying.
And then whoever is whoever is the one executing this proposal or the RFP. It's to their whoever that is, if that's Molokai General, nonprofit, um, private sector. They will have to build the relationships with however they're gonna use to get us off island. So it's not saying that the monies are going specifically for charter, that might be an option that they use. But it is their responsibility to make sure that they have that working relationship with not just medical, not just insurance. But with the transportation providers as well. Okay, um. Oh, sorry, go ahead, I forgot.
First of all, mahalo for your hard work for taking Molokai's um issues to legislature and state for us and fighting for our behalf. Um, I heard multiple times that you guys are looking for input from the community. So like what it is that we want to utilize is whatever amount of dollars that get allocated to Molokai for. So just to give every like perspective, if we were to decide that we wanted to focus on Kupuna healthcare. Then that chunk of money can last that demographic on Molokai longer than trying to like address every single problem that we get. So I think that's something you wanna like make sure that like all these QR codes are on the table and. Um, we kind of like feel kind of meh about all these surveys, but I think this is important for everybody to do so that they have actual solid numbers to give back to their colleagues. And write up this RFP, discuss the issues and the questions that come with focusing on Kupuna. Or if we have to develop like uh, if we pick uh, oh, we service the most sick in our community, how do we make that like? Spectrum of who is really, really sick and needs that often, um, that many frequent flights versus who's not. So just a friendly reminder to have everybody fill out this QR code because there's no way we're gonna hit everybody in nine minutes. So put it in there, what you like to see, who do we service, what kind of outcomes do we do, how do we utilize the money we get? From this pilot program and that'll help them make sure that it can become successful to higher chances. So don't forget the QR code, please, thank you.
And I know most of you is on social media, so we'll put the link on social media, most likely what's the apps?
Um, and thank you all. I can't tell, um, I'm Leila and following on several of the other comments, I'm curious. I mean, we know that we need non emergency healthcare access, we're used to going off island to get lots of healthcare. Um, we know that the airlines that we have aren't reliable and I know that's not tonight's topic. But it's about the healthcare and getting to it. So one thought of mine is how much has already been addressed about identifying? What exactly kind of healthcare people are leaving for or have to leave for? Can, how much of that can come to the island? And then within all of that, even within the Kupuna, some of us have to pay out of pocket. To fly, to go early and some of us don't. Um, so how much do we already know or will we know about the profiles of the patients and the people with needs? That seems super important for designing the program and then for analyzing, is it successful?
So thank you for that, and I think Auntie Stacy made it really um clear. When you have a hospital like Molokai General, that kind of get pretty much everybody's history. The priority behind that and then making sure in this case, some of the issues you just talked about are addressed. It's super key because again, it's gonna come back to everything from that, the reimbursement. And how you go forward in um the needs. Whether or not um Molokai General does that portion of it or any other entity. And and I think I can speak for everybody here that whoever does take it, they will have the support. Because everybody know that we need the medical needs behind it. And that's why again, it's super important for those that don't want to speak to hit the QR code. Because some people just shame, you know, and then they feel that, oh, and like, you know, them tell me, oh, it's a stupid question. Because there's really no stupid question at this point. It's more of for us um to make sure that those questions that you guys bring up. We validate it on behalf of the request of the $2 million, of which I would say about 1.2 will probably be used for Molokai. In regards to the reimbursement and if you don't have the medical, again, too. The medical reimbursement, which will, and I think that's what you was alluding to, the longevity of the funds. The reimbursement will allow for that longevity of fund to be there. And those that don't have insurance will also have the opportunity to use that. Without hoping that anybody else in the community go, oh, now we gotta use them for her or for him. My dad is eighty-five years old, believe me, I vested enough to know that. I need him to get medical as well. But with that in mind, it should not be the point that. Maybe you're not from here and somebody say, eh, she not from here, she just move here. This is not the case, the case is everybody is an human being and we all need medical services. This is what that funding is for, this is taxpayer dollars and we want to make sure that everybody has that. So I know we gotta close this meeting up and um, I just wanted to say thank you for everybody coming. Um, if you have any questions, um, you guys can contact us. Um, feel free, our offices are always open to what you folks have to say. Um, I really appreciate all of you, you guys' comments. I think it validates the request that we've made um and the priorities that we have set. But I think this is super, super cool that this many people turned out tonight, especially on spelling bee going on right now and I'm like, yeah. But um, thank you, thank you so much, um, and please, by all means, reach out to us. We will continue to stay on this issue. Um, and I'll just let Mahina finish up as well as the Department of Health for coming to Molokai.
Just echo my thanks for everyone coming out tonight and providing your feedback and your questions. Um, I learned new things from our community that I hadn't heard before, so I really appreciate that. Um, there is still a little bit more in the process and more opportunity to contribute and to um. I think give feedback to the RFP once it comes out and I think Wanda will go over that. So just thank you very much and I really hope that we can help to improve our current situation through this program.
Okay, and so in order to get this RFP issued out in the online universe. We need to give it a deadline for your responses. So what would you suggest would be a good cutoff date for all responses?
Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday, um, and make sure you, yeah, make sure you do it.
Okay, so this Friday, we want to hear from you. You can respond to that post meeting survey online, just scan the QR code. Um, Kui develop questions for you to answer and mahalo to all of you for choosing to be here tonight. So we are learning a lot from you, from the Department of Health and we are your allies.
Um, mahalo, everybody for coming, especially our medical care providers on island. If you are a medical care provider and you weren't able to set aside time to meet with Wanda and Shayna Lynn. Um, here's your time to set up, they will leave on Thursday, that's why. Thank you for coming.